Good evening. Welcome to the Olentangie Local Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting. It's September 14th, 2017 at 6:00 PM. We're in the Berlin Room of the Olentangie Administrative Offices. So can we call roll? Mrs. Hatfield.
Mrs. Fiesel.
Here.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Mrs. Patrick.
Here.
And Mr. Bartz.
Here. If you please all rise with us and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. One moment.
There's one there. No, that's the wrong one.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. But I have a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Bartz, so moved. I'll second.
Comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fiesel.
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
And Mr. Bartz.
Yes. Tonight, we have some great presentations and a very important one to start out with. So, Mr. Rafe, I'm going to turn the floor over to you.
Thank you. Thank you all and welcome. So, out of the countless teachers in Ohio, the Ohio Department of Education has selected one of our own to represent our state as the Teacher of the Year. As you all know, Jonathan Juravich, Liberty Tree Elementary Art Teacher, has been named the 2018 Ohio Teacher of the Year. He is the first teacher in the history of the Olentangie Local Schools to be named as the Ohio Teacher of the Year and the very first art teacher in Ohio to receive such an honor. If you know just even a little bit about Jonathan, you'll know that he is truly a remarkable educator, motivating those students around him, whether they be students or staff, to achieve, stretch, and grow. His journey to be the Ohio Teacher of the Year began when Liberty Tree Elementary School Principal Terry Caton nominated him for the honor. Mrs. Caton described Mr. Jay as a one-of-a-kind teacher who inspires young children to think outside the box and see the world in a new light. The first step in the process happened in August when Jonathan was named the State Board District 6 Teacher of the Year, therefore becoming a finalist for the State Teacher of the Year. Before we could even get to a board meeting to present him with the certificate that I left at my desk, he went on to be selected as the Ohio Teacher of the Year. Jonathan will now represent Olentangie Local Schools and Ohio in the national Teacher of the Year selection process. He'll travel to California to meet other state-level Teachers of the Year and head to the White House to meet the President and the Secretary of Education. We are more than proud to see Jonathan be recognized at the state and national level. I'd like to take this opportunity to invite Mr. Juravich to share a few words and insight with you about his journey in education, what motivates him, and how receiving this honor has impacted him. Thank you and congratulations to Jonathan.
It's an absolutely humbling honor to stand here today and last Friday to accept this recognition. And I'm so grateful to the Olentangie community, the administration, and the Board for all their support and for your continued support of a high-quality arts education for our students. Thank you for acknowledging the impact that the arts have on young, growing minds and how the arts are able to open up the world for our students. They're able to investigate different cultures, various perspectives, adventures, problem-solving, collaboration, and the list goes on and on and on. Thank you for this realization and for your actions that support those beliefs. I think back to my first year in the district where I was art on a cart, traveling between multiple buildings, and the ways I have grown as an educator and the countless people that have influenced me in such meaningful ways. This afternoon, I had the opportunity to celebrate the life of my dear friend, the late Penny Donahue, who was the former art teacher at Indian Springs Elementary. And it's because of exceptionally enthusiastic, creative, and caring educators like her that I am the person I am today. In so many ways, this recognition is truly about the support system of countless individuals all working together through small actions to make a difference in the lives of our students. I challenge myself each day to live by the words of Helen Keller. "I long to accomplish a great and noble task, but it is my chief duty to accomplish small tasks as if they are great and noble." Over the next year, these words and their call to action will be at the forefront of my work as the Ohio Teacher of the Year, whether it's providing individuals with the opportunity to exhibit gratitude or engage in groups of people in acts of listening to one another or buttons. Right? I do love buttons. And I told my students that I wish they could be a part of each new adventure that I'll be going on in the next year, but that's just not possible. So instead, each Liberty Tree student is designing a button for me to wear. And starting tonight, to each event, dinner, presentation, conference, I will take them with me and wear different buttons to each moment and thus representing the incredible community of Liberty Tree and Olentangie Schools wherever I go. Thank you for your continued support, and I hope to represent our incredible district and that of the state of Ohio with humility and creativity and strength over the next year. Thank you very much. And I brought you all buttons.
I have a question, though.
Can we do a photo op?
Yeah. And I have a question for you two. How did you get the state superintendent to wear a matching shirt? How was that strange?
Yeah. So Angela, who is our contact at the Board of Education, she texted me that week and said, "What are you wearing on Friday?" And I said, "Plaid," because it's what I wear every day of my life. And she said, "Well, which one?" And I said, "Well, I'm at Target, and this is the one that I'm going to wear." I had already purchased it, but I took a picture and sent it to her. And she said, "That's great. Wear that." And then he had gone and selected it and bought it and wore it along too. So, yeah. He was really thoughtful. So. And here, you can take one and pass it down.
I'm going blind draw. We're going to take a picture, though. Oh, all of us?
Us? Oh. Are you sure? I don't think we deserve to film the picture.
You're in the middle. I'm not seeing the number you're wearing.
I should've worn black.
Yeah. I wore check, because I was close. Okay. Kathy Lenko, our Director of Food Service.
Hi. She always liked it when she comes.
I don't have buttons, but I do have treats for everyone. So, thank you for having me here this evening. I appreciate it. I'm here just to give you a brief update on the Food Service Department, more specifically about à la carte compliance, and then also a little update on our newly reformed District Wellness Committee. So part of our Ohio Revised Code states that we must adopt and enforce nutritional standards that govern the types of foods and beverages available for sale on the premises of our schools. This includes the time and the place each type of food and beverage is available for sale. In the instance of Olentangie, we have Administrative Guideline 8500A titled Nutritional Guidelines that are our guidelines for à la carte sales. In a nutshell, it's the Smart Snacks in Schools Guidelines, which I have reviewed with you guys in the past. They're the federal à la carte standards that govern any food or beverage that we sell to students outside of the reimbursable lunch and breakfast meal during that school day. The school day is defined as midnight the day before to 30 minutes after the end of the school day. So anything that's sold to students has to meet these strict à la carte standards. That includes anything in our food service operations, so in the cafeterias. It also includes the vending machines, school stores. If there's a bake sale going on at the school for fundraising, all of those items that are sold to students have to follow Smart Snacks in Schools. So I'm happy to share that we are in compliance with Smart Snacks in Schools for last school year and this school year. We've actually been able to expand some of our offerings to the students, and I have some of those today that you can take home and sample or eat throughout the meeting. The first I have is a triple chocolate-filled cookie with fudge filling. It's by Riches. It's whole grain. It is very tasty. It just came on the markets like this August, and we're selling them in our cafeterias. The kids are really loving them. We also have some new kettle chips designed by Frito-Lay. I have three of the four flavors with me today. I have barbecue, sea salt, and vinegar, barbecue, and the fourth flavor is jalapeno cheddar, which I don't have. And then they've also redesigned Funyuns as whole grain, which people chuckle about because it's kind of a blast from the past. So those are four new products that Frito-Lay has introduced to the market. Some other new products we have in the frozen treat aisle, I guess if you want to call it, we have something called Fro-Nana, which is a banana-based ice cream, but there's actually no milk in it. It's banana-based, and it's a chocolate flavor. So nice for our kids that have allergies, because it doesn't have any of the eight major allergens. We also have started to sell Flex Frost at Liberty High School. It is a high-protein, low-sugar ice cream. We're selling about over 200 units a day of it. The kids really seem to like it, especially the athletes, because they can get some extra protein and keep their sugar intake down. And then the last one we're selling is called Johnny Pop, and that is a smoothie on a stick. It's gluten-free and made in a nut-free facility, which is nice for our elementaries. That's not milk-free, though. So that's kind of what's going on in the à la carte Smart Snacks in Schools. I'll pass around the baskets so you guys can sample. But I'll just take a moment to talk about kind of the breakfast and lunch program, what's kind of going on. We instituted a new pizza program at our three high schools at the start of the school year. It's called Smart Mouth Pizza. We are the second school district in Ohio to implement it. What's so special about it is it's a seven-inch personal pan pizza that we cook in-house. And when I say cook, we're actually proofing the dough, we're saucing the pizzas, we're topping the pizzas, and then we bake them in a high-speed conveyor oven. Takes about two and a half minutes to cook it. Very tasty, serving about over like 500, 600 when we serve it on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. It's actually beating out our delivered pizza. The kids are requesting it when there's delivered pizza. So, very well-received, very exciting for the kids. And then for breakfast, we have purchased our smoothie machines I talked about last time for Oak Creek, Liberty Middle School, and Liberty High School. Oak Creek did a sampling with all of their students last Thursday and then started selling it at breakfast, as far as the breakfast meal on Monday. And the kids all gave it a thumbs up at Oak Creek. And then we'll be doing training for Liberty Middle School and Liberty High School tomorrow and next week to get them up and going with serving smoothies as part of their breakfast program. They can get the smoothies in two flavors, chocolate fruit and strawberry and banana right now. Last thing I want to touch about is myself and Alicia Behrens, who is in People Services. We have reformed our District Wellness Committee. We have about a group of 13 people that will be on the committee, principals, parents, school nurse, PE and health teachers, someone from the Delaware General Health District will be on it. This was, it's been around for a while, but we're going to get it back together and kind of really focus on reviewing procedures that we have as it relates to student wellness and then also look at bringing events in and programs for students that focus on wellness and awareness. Anyone have any questions before I pass around your snacks?
I have two.
Yes.
One is from an infamous Facebook page where the parents were concerned because the child wanted water, but they have to have milk. And so we, because of, and I think it's because of federal guidelines.
Correct.
Can you explain that?
Correct. So we participate in the National School Lunch Program, which means we have to follow a strict meal pattern that USDA has set for us. And one of those components is milk, and it's eight ounces of fluid milk, both at breakfast and at lunch, and we have to offer it to the student. The student doesn't have to select it, but we can't replace water in place of milk because of USDA guidelines. If the student has a milk allergy, then yes, if we have a doctor with documentation, we can substitute it. But just for a student who doesn't like milk, we can't make that substitution.
And then my second question is, I realize we feed a lot of mouths, but have you entertained farm-to-table? Because that seems to be a big thing in smaller schools, but I don't know if we can...
Yes. Actually, last year, we started a partnership with a local farmer. Now, I'm blanking on his name.
Ethan Snyder.
Yes, Ethan.
Liberty High School graduate.
Yes. What's the name of his farm?
I don't know.
Well, we were buying fresh heads of romaine from Ethan, if I can think of his farm. It's down in Paris, Ohio. We were buying it for, we were trialing it at five different schools, and unfortunately, he wasn't able to keep up with us, or I'm not exactly sure what happened, but he was not able to fulfill our needs anymore. So we're always open to the possibility of doing it. Since we're such a large district, most people can't really supply us with it, because they want to do one school or two schools. And it can be hard then when you have multiple vendors to evaluate, make sure quality is still there. So we're always open to the idea when the ideas present. We do do DOD Produce, which is a Department of Defense produce where we divert commodity money to purchase fresh fruits and vegetables, and those all have to be domestic, which typically means that they are still locally grown. So.
If there be federal guideline changes in the Department of Education and otherwise, I would assume conceptually the program would continue for the healthy diets?
Yes. Yes. We always want to make sure that we're feeding the kids a nutritious meal. That's why we try to make our meals so appealing to the kids by offering fresh fruits and vegetables, so that they're by the meal versus à la carte items.
Beth, you do just a great job of continually searching for what the kids want, getting feedback from the kids about the types of products they want, and then finding those products that fit within the guidelines to serve them, but...
We try.
Yeah.
All right. I will pass around the snacks.
All right.
Take what you would like.
Mr. Rake, can I have this?
Let me down.
Wow. Thank you. Wow, look at that. There you go. Randy will take those ones. These are good ones.
Yeah, it's like...
There you go.
Yes. Vinegar. But I kind of want to know what a Funyun. I've never had a Funyun.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Sorry, Mrs. Bart. We just kind of have to...
I'm going to try one. Yeah. I've never had one.
Thank you very much.
My dinner. Yeah.
So with that, welcome Jody Clark, our Director of Transportation, and she has a bus for everyone. It's parked up front.
Yay! I have a side gift today.
Oh, nice.
I brought Randy Snyder, my supervisor with the Berkshire compound. So we are going to do this together. We'll put him in charge of that. Thank you for the opportunity to address the Board tonight and give you some information on our department. As you know, we're very, very busy. The services that we provide obviously are a total of 45 buildings. I'll not bore you with all the different things, but the Olentangie Academy may bring some questions, because we do service multiple programs and services for identified students within that one building for Olentangie. Also, the other 21 locations include, of course, Ventures Delaware Career Center and our non-public schools that we transport to. And I'm going to let Randy talk about this interesting slide. We have pulled some annual data for you and...
Sometimes putting the numbers into a comparison when we talk about those 45 buildings, when we look at our, from the FY '15 school year going from 141 routes to 148, this year we have 149. Some of those numbers, we start to look at those things and try to compare it to something that maybe we can relate to. For example, really, our students are riding our buses typically twice a day. So where it may say the average number of students transported in a day is approximately 9,600, well, that quickly equates to over 19,000 bus routes. Five times in a week, that's about 96,000 bus rides. It's over 96,000 bus rides. Big Ohio State game this week. Go Bucks! Basically, we're transporting the horseshoe every six days, if you will, putting those numbers together. Our mileage equates to over 2.3 million miles in a year. That's approximately, the Earth is 3,958 miles around, that's 586 times around the world. Trying to put that into comparison to see, what do those daily miles add up to? What do those daily rides add up to? We transport a lot of students, if you will, over the year, and absolutely, our number one goal is to do that safely.
Before you go to the next chart, I was surprised to see the average daily rider down, like 1,000 students, 17 to 15.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you.
Put more routes.
Mr. O'Brien, a lot of that comes to our district. While it may not be growing geographically in our 95 square miles, the roads that we're traveling daily are increasing through the district. So that's one of the reasons when we think of the roads that we're traveling down, each additional mile that we add adds time. As far as the number of riders that we are recording on a daily, or on a yearly basis through ODE, that number is becoming more accurate. Over the last several years, we've spent some time with our drivers to better educate and help them understand, if you will, how to count the students correctly, so that students aren't being double-counted, or that a route that may pick up a student and drop them off at a high school, and then they're shuttled to their career center, or they're shuttled to an alternative program, those students can only be counted once in a day. So therefore, our counting, if you will, is becoming more accurate, both for students and for miles as well, to make sure that we're capturing our true minds. Thank you for the question.
Thank you.
How do we get there? Obviously, through preparedness and collaboration with many, many people. Those are stakeholders. Obviously, our main ones are our parents and our students, but we touch a lot of other different departments, school buildings, like People Services. They're our main folks that we deal with, along with preschool also. That has increased over the years. So we meet, have meetings, and collaborate with them to make sure that we have accurate registration and data information and student information, and we know that what the needs of the students are when we put them on the buses. So we work collaboratively with each other to do that. Also, we have some employee programs in our department to increase morale. We also have Perfect Attendance, Kids First Awards, which Mr. Mark Rafe signs those certificates for each driver. Those Kids First Awards are brought to us in our department by typically parents in the district who have honored their driver for something good that they have done. So we have several of those. Do you have a number on those that we have?
No, not that we've seen. A 17% increase in perfect attendance over the last four years.
Yes.
So our perfect attendance, if you will, is trending up, which is absolutely a good thing.
Right. And the driver week of programs. Also, of course, as you know, drivers are an intricate part of the daily pre-trip inspections. They also do a thorough cleaning each year at the end of the school year to prepare for the State Patrol inspections, to keep our fleet in a great shape, along with our mechanics. We did do some redesigning of our K-3 safety program based on some feedback from our stakeholders, and that would be our principals in the building. We shortened the program a little bit, but still remained effective in the district. Also, our driver training program and our professional development, we redesigned some of that through collaboration with our on-bus instructors and our local membership. The evaluation process also, and the application process is another thing that Randy and I took a look at this last year and how we wanted to flow that through our department. So that is something else that we have revamped and redesigned. So it's a more efficient process. We're bringing people in on an info session, and we're passing applicants through the process more efficiently, which leads to another slide that we'll talk about here. Positive results has the, obviously, the increase of student data. That goes and reflects back to the collaboration of each department and school building that we collaborate with. The increase in the workplace morale, obviously, from our programs that we use throughout the year for recognition. The fleet is always ready to go to transport our most precious cargo, and it is safe all year long. Increased quality training programs for employees and students is something that we think is top-notch in our department. I have had many school districts say that we have one of the best training programs in the transportation department. So we have had some hats off to our department for that. Stabilizing also, sorry, stabilizing also our workforce through the redesign of the application process and the hiring process.
Just a few staffing updates. We're very pleased and proud to announce that we started off the 17-18 school year fully-staffed to be able to cover our routes this year. Honestly, I would like to, we would like to recognize the Board in your collaboration with us to adjust our substitute driver hourly rate. We are very competitive now within the job market here in central Ohio due to that increase in the substitute hourly rate. So thank you for that. And also, we recognize our continued growth in recruitment, our screening process through the training and the hiring process. We weekly are reaching out to potential prospective employees for the district and generating and starting those conversations right away. And we kind of have a slogan, if you will. We don't let the grass grow. We keep them moving. So once they show interest in joining the Olentangie team, we're on it to get them to come and join us here with Olentangie. Speaking of bringing people in and training them and empowering them to be quality employees, to date this school year, our transportation staff have participated in at least eight hours of professional development and service training. We have training that happens each year on an annual basis, as well as there are oftentimes topics or subjects that are brought to our attention that are relevant at the time, so we add those to our training schedule. We've spoken already this year, or trained this year, student management, safety and emergency scenario preparedness, the Alice Training for both new employees as well as employees who need to freshen up on that training, if you will, a new employee orientations, new driver training series. We have a series of classes that for the first two years of somebody who has joined the Olentangie team will take a series of courses to make sure that they are equipped to be successful for Olentangie. We have, as an example, we'll have employees that will join us that have never driven a school bus before. We'll also have employees that will join Olentangie, because we recruit them, we attract them to join our team, who may have driven a school bus for another district for 15 years, and Olentangie is a great place to join. So recognizing those two things, they may be a new driver for Olentangie, but we actually have seasoned drivers that join us as well. And we continue to partner with district staff to provide those trainings based on requests and feedback, again, like Jody mentioned earlier, from our stakeholders, from our driver local 322, on topics that are very timely. Again, collaborating with People Services to provide some of those trainings themselves.
Obviously, we have some upcoming projects. As you all know, the opening of Berlin High School is one of those, and we are going to begin with the boundaries and the routing piece in VersaTrans. We've already created that database. We will do continued evaluation of non-public routing. We are doing that as we speak each year. The replacement plan is in full effect. The replacement plan is in full effect. We will purchase 24 new buses this year, and thank you for that. That will help our fleet greatly, not necessarily meaning that all of those will replace, but it will actually help our fleet. Typically, what happens with the fleet is the bodies go before the engines go. As you know, the salt is not our friend around here. And also, we're going to begin hopefully in early January, late January, and doing our pre-grade advancement with our routing so we can get a better handle on our routing program for our new school opening and have some data from that. And that concludes everything. Does anyone have any other questions?
I have one. So it was a great report, I appreciate that. It sounds like things are going really well. I guess I'd ask you, you may not be prepared to answer this question, but where's the biggest opportunity for efficiency as you guys look at what you're doing next? And is there any other thing? Is there anything that you're not doing, or anything you're not getting, or you need to have to make this process even better? And because at the end of the day, it's a hard cost, and so we want the kids to be there safe, but we also want to do it the most effective way we can. Is there anything that you don't have, you need, or anything you're doing to look at those something differently? And if you don't know that, you can come back and tell us later.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would like some time to think about that question. I know staggering bell times are one of those things that can create more efficiency in a district this size. So that would be an extensive study that would have to happen. So that would be the first thing that would come to my mind.
Well, I'll say the answer she doesn't want to say, and that's continuing to examine non-public transportation, where we're providing it, where we don't have to as a courtesy to our residents.
Even on a different schedule, right? There'll be buses running after we finish school because we're doing the non-publics.
Yep.
It does, that is an area that's putting a strain on our transportation department, the number of routes we run and so on. So we've pulled back on some of it, you have In-Lu-交通 transportation on the agenda again, and so, you know, we're continuing to examine it. She wanted to say it, but she was afraid. It's okay, we sound like we haven't spoken about it before.
Well, I have a question, because I try to wrap my head around how big this job really is. 149 routes is huge. Do you use a logistical program?
We do, we use Versatrans for our routing software. And it actually is a great program. We have a lot of new staff, and that is something else I would like to thank the board for because for the first time, you know, we have 12, including myself, staff members, which has allowed us a great opportunity. And even though some of them are new and learning that program, you know, it's been great to have that extra staff, and we really appreciate the district for that. That's been a, that's been a huge help.
How much of a strain has the, all the construction put on those bus routing?
Well, that's a challenge every day.
Other than us personally.
Yeah, timing. I will speak to that. We do have some timing issues out in the district. I will call Brookshire Middle School one of my satellite buildings. Because it's so far out away from, and you know, the way the feeder schools work and the way we try to route things, typically, that's a tough animal to get to and connect anything with. And so we're having some timing issues at Freedom Trail into Brookshire right now and getting out of the Brookshire area. I think once Bale Canyon opens up, that's going to help us. The old state, you know, road obviously is, you know, slowed down, you can't make a left on Orange, so those things are challenges. We try our best to work around them, and you can estimate that you feel the bus is going to make it, and sometimes other entities come into play that you don't anticipate.
And if I may, one thing that will add to that as well is the opening of Berlin High School next year will give us a piece in the puzzle, in the overall puzzle, if you will, to potentially address some of the more greater, bigger picture items, now that we'll have buses further north, if you will, starting out their mornings and their afternoons, and then really dispersed from there. So that'll be a piece into the puzzle that we'll start looking at in January when we start preparing for the new school.
And are we still triple routing, or are most routes double routed?
Yeah. Anyplace we can, we do have some triple routes, yes. And, you know, the afternoon is where it's a little tougher because of the timing, but yes, we're still double and triple routing wherever we can. That is where you become the most efficient, and when you can triple route or even add another one to it, that's where you're going to save your dollars. So we combine anything that we can.
That's what she mentioned, the staggered start times, the way to triple route is to have, so if we can start high school earlier.
We're not going to go with that. We've already put that to bed.
Can we start middle school earlier and put some middle school kids on the high school? I think that upsets parents, though, to have their middle schoolers riding with high schoolers.
Oh, we do have middle schoolers riding with high schoolers.
You do?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do. We do have some combined.
She and a hand.
Not much, but yeah, in the morning, you don't see that as much as you do in the afternoon.
Yeah.
The afternoon, we have them combined most everywhere, but the morning is a little bit different because we have more time in the morning. So we don't combine all of those.
Takes approximately three hours in the morning as we start the day, approximately six o'clock ended at just about nine o'clock, and in the afternoon, we'll start basically taking our first students home at 2:30 and finishing up by 4:30. So we take what we do in a three-hour block in the morning, condense it down, press it, and then deliver the students back, if you will, home in a two-hour block, approximately two hours.
I noticed that. There are an hour part in my subdivision, high school, middle school, elementary. And is, but isn't the day longer for each of those, and that's why they're only a half hour apart in the afternoon?
Yeah, the length of day is what, you know, dictates that, because I think six and three-quarters is middle school, and seven and a quarter, I think, is high school.
You can set your clock, we'll watch by him though.
You can.
So other than reducing the day, you know, and I know that that is, you know, that means reducing, you know, other things, and, you know, I don't know that we want to do that, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
Good information.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So with that, we will now move into a presentation by Marty Argonbright, Director of People Services, and People Services update. Hello, Marty.
Good evening. I would like to start off by introducing our Assistant Director of People Services, Stephanie Dabrico.
Hi.
She will be sharing some information with us tonight also. Stephanie has been with us in the district for
Eight?
Ten years, and this is our third year working together, and Stephanie does a great job, not only supporting our administrative team in our department, but also our students and staff and parents in the district. So we are getting closer, I think. So overview of what we are going to cover here tonight is a little bit about special education, our preschool program, English language learners, related services, our nurses, our non-academic barriers. We will update you on our 2016 special education rating, and also our selective review or our special education audit. So Stephanie, I'm going to just turn it over to Stephanie to talk about her department overview.
So I'm going to throw a bunch of numbers at you here. So right now, we are sitting at 2,329 students with disabilities. So if you do some quick math, with the total district population, that's about 11% of our, of our population, that's K to 12. We have preschool on a different, a different slide. The categories of disability according to ODE are listed here. So you can see, you know, things like autism, speech and language, emotional disability. We have students in all categories in the district. And currently, we have 168 and a half, so really 169 people, right, intervention specialists who service students K to 12. So I wanted to talk about the intervention specialist real quick, just in terms of their duties and their role, and kind of what they have to, you know, accomplish every day in terms of their teaching, their direct work with students. ODE gives us caseload or ratio numbers that we have to abide by for most of our students who are served out in a mainstream setting. Those ratios at elementary and middle school are 16, so 16 students to one teacher, and 24 students at the high school to one intervention specialist. But where that, those numbers change in our district, we have lots of students that we serve through our specialized learning centers, our special education classrooms, and those ratios are much lower. So for example, students with significant needs in the area of autism, if those students are in a specialized learning center and they have those significant needs, there's only six students allowed, you know, per intervention specialist. So similarly, students with multiple disabilities, the ratio according to the state is eight students to one intervention specialist. So that, just wanted to paint that picture for you and how it kind of impacts the staffing that we do in our department. In addition to caseload ratios, which is the number of students, the state is now also wanting districts to look at the workload of an intervention specialist. So not just a head count, how many kids do you service, but what are their needs? How many minutes of service do they have on their IEPs? Just the frequency of service, very, some of our kids have very specialized types of services. And of course, the planning time that teachers need to be able to accomplish those tasks. So those are all very important, you know, components to the job of the intervention And then in terms of preschool, this number has actually grown since we even created the slide, so we're over, just over 500 students now. That includes IEP students and typical peers who are in our preschool settings. Again, 35, 36 teachers, and we have grown, as you know, we are currently at 33 preschool classrooms, and 12 of those classrooms, again, are housed in the Shanahan wing that we just converted over the summer. So that was an increase, those 33 classrooms is an increase from 27 last year, and we, you know, expect to see continued high growth in this area. English language learners, I work with that department, and we are at about 326 students right now. Again, it changes daily. We get lots of move-in students over the course of the year. Some of our heavier buildings, needier buildings in this area, Olin Tangi Meadows leads the pack with 72 of those students. And then Glen Oak, Oak Creek, Orange High, and Orange Middle are also the buildings that really kind of experience more of this type of population. We have 13 EL teachers, and in our district, we have over 45 languages that are represented and spoken by families. This next slide just talks about we have lots of support staff in our district, related services. For example, OTs, PTs, speech and language pathologists. We have over 210 staff in this area. We've also included numbers for school psychologists. Intervention aides are prevalent across buildings across the district to work with students with significant needs. And then we have special education clerks who help us process all of the state mandated paperwork that's required for those 2,300 students. We have seven school nurses and 24 clinic aides across the district.
As far as our non-academic barriers area of focus, we are working with staff, students, and families on mental health, substance abuse, medical and physical health, violence and abuse, family issues, and behavior support. We have many, many areas that Alicia Barron, who is new, in her second year in this role in our department, that are working to improve our support for students in the district. So she's done an outstanding job of kind of looking at where the needs are, where we can better provide support for students in the district, and we're kind of carrying out those initiatives this year. So non-academic barriers and other area of focus in our department. As far as our special education rating, every year, every school district receives a special education rating. So the last special education rating that we received was 2016, which obviously was for the 2014-15 school year. You may recall, I shared with you information about, our overall score was 34 out of 36 points, which includes nine indicators in several different areas. The two indicators that we received, three out of four points, were secondary transition planning and timely and accurate data, which were direct results from the selective review or the special education audit that we're currently going through right now. We have some new information that's hot off the press as far as the 2016 special education rating. I received information this week that due to our corrective action plan that we submitted through the special education selective review or the audit, we are, our 2016 special education rating is up from 36, well, it's 36 of all 36 indicators we hit because of our corrective action plan. So we should be receiving the 2017 rating. I think those come out in December or January. So once we have that information, I will make sure that we share that with you. Our selective review update or audit update, if you recall, in August 2015, we were informed that we were going to go through an audit. We submitted 30 records in December of 2015 to the Office of Exceptional Children for Review. We also had in February, an onsite review and a parent participation meeting. We received a summary report in May, which there were no surprises on, in that summary report, and those are some of the areas that we were kind of targeted on and looking at ways to improve those processes, where our progress monitoring, planning form, goal writing, and transition services. And then in September of last year, August and September, we were required to provide professional development on all those areas to our staff. We were also corrected the IEPs that were submitted, or actually, after that last training, we were required to submit like a prong, they're calling it a prong-two records. So once we, once we delivered our professional development, we were required to go through a prong-two or another review. And so we submitted five records, five additional records for our prong-two review in November, and we received those information back from those records in May, and we are currently working on a few corrections out of those five corrections right now, which we will resubmit, we're ready to resubmit after our last IEP meeting with that prong-two, which is coming up next week. So hopefully soon, we will be able to finalize and wrap up our selective review process, which has been, you know, we're going on two years now for this. So overall, it's been a great learning experience for us as far as areas to work on in writing of compliance IEPs, but we're looking forward to wrapping this up as soon as possible. Any questions?
I have a few. Okay. The support staff?
Yes.
The nurses, the occupational therapist, are they all through the ELA?
ELSD.
Or ESE, I'm sorry.
No, not all of them are not all through the ESE.
And then the ratios you talked about for, for intervention teachers. In the preschool, who handles the IEPs? Is it the director, or do the individual teachers review them? Is it the director, or do the individual teachers review them and write them?
Teacher, the teachers write the IEPs in preschool. There are supervisors that attend the IEP meetings as the district representative.
From your department?
Pupils, yeah, we have two preschool supervisors.
So, how many IEPs are there for the 400 and 50, well, over 500 students that we have? How many of those are IEPs?
You'll have to look.
More than half?
Yeah, probably more. Yes. It's a lot. Yes.
And, well, I work with IEP documents because I have a child with an IEP, and it's very cumbersome.
Yes.
You could almost have people just writing those documents, not doing anything with the students, because they're very lengthy.
Just a comment, Roger. I appreciate the focus you gave on reporting on this. It has been a couple of years since that meeting at the previous boardroom. Thank you. And so it's nice to have you really be right up front, those are the issues, what and how you've taken care of it, and move forward with it.
Absolutely.
So thank you for concentrating on that.
Yes, no problem. We've attempted to look at that as a way that we can continue to improve and provide, you know, more compliant IEPs and the best services for our student in the district. So we've tried to keep that mindset as we've gone through the process.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to the board president's report. A couple of just quick things, and then we have to work out a scheduling, potential scheduling, Snafffield, in a moment.
Yes, if we can.
So I'm going to do something personal, which is wish my wife a happy anniversary today for the two years. She, I asked her if she wanted to come and hang out with us, and she graciously declined. But today also, I was flying through Baltimore and was able to witness an honor flight when it came into BWI. Thirty-two mostly Korean War veterans, but there were about a dozen World War II veterans who were in that crowd. And the place was standing ovations and cheering for those folks as they made their way to, as part of the honor flight trip, to go see the Korean War Monument, World War II monuments, and the monuments in Washington. So hats off to our veterans, and if you're a veteran in the crowd, thank you for your service. Now, to the fun part. So, Mr. King, I believe you have a conflict.
I saw everybody has different schedules. If we can't work it out, I understand, but if we can, then.
Right. So, yeah, I think you had a conflict on the 12th.
Of October.
Of October. So, we talked about maybe the 11th, but Mrs. Fiesel has a conflict on the 11th. I have a conflict on the 10th and the 9th. We could push it a week earlier to the 5th, that puts us back-to-back on meetings. I don't have a problem with it if the board doesn't, but I'll just leave it. If not, we can leave it at the 12th and just, we'll put a.
I can do the 5th.
Fathead. Is the 5th okay? Do we have any problem with the 5th?
I can do the 5th.
All right. So, no objections?
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, nothing? All right. So we'll make a note of that. So our board meeting, it was originally scheduled for Thursday, October 12th, we pushed up a week to the 5th of October. So we'll make the appropriate announcements, and thanks for that. So with that, Mr. Rafe.
All right. Good evening again, and again, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being in attendance. So, as usual, I've got quite a few good things to share. We had a student from Heritage Elementary School, Heritage Elementary School get featured on The Tonight Show starring Jimmy Fallon. Leah Thobe is a fifth grader, and she presented on September 6th, her invention called the Jumper's Helper. If you haven't seen this on YouTube, it's really a cute little invention, where she and her sister like to jump rope, and it enables them to jump rope without a third party. So, nice invention. Leah's interest in inventions was sparked by the school's involvement in the invention convention program, which she previously won at both the school and the state level. So I've seen some advertising on this topic. We had a group of students at Orange Middle School want to participate in the relief effort for Houston, so we implemented a district-wide Hats for Houston fundraiser. So all throughout the district, we will be, students will be allowed to wear hats, and they can provide a $1 or more donation to wear a hat tomorrow in class in schools. So, and all the money's going to go to the American Red Cross Texas Relief Fund. So, we have our first parent program team public forum coming up, Raising Unselfies. And educational psychologist, Dr. Michelle Borba, will be there and discuss why empathy is a skill that's vital for children's mental health, resilience, leadership skills, and job success, inspiring stories of successful having kids who are also kind, moral, and resilient. Of course, the event is free, September 20th, 7:00 PM, Olentangie Orange High School. So I encourage all of our parents to attend that event. Saturday afternoon, starting around 3:00, the music boosters got together and decided that they wanted to have an all Olentangie music festival. So every single music group in the district at the high school level will be performing, starting with, I think the Liberty Band is first at 3:00, and then the orchestra and the choirs from all three schools will be performing. So that event, the proceeds of that event will benefit the Berlin High School music program. So it's a great gesture on behalf of our music boosters. Speaking of Berlin High School, we, the logo design contest is underway. Entries are due by the end of October, end of the day on October 12th. We will, encouraging all students attending Berlin High School to get involved in that logo design contest. They'll have 10 finalists. They'll be posted for review no later than October 31st. And then the students, the future students of Berlin High School will vote on the final design the week of November 5th. So, you know, that'll be the official school logo. The athletic logos will follow from that, but could also be slightly different. Mr. Spinner and Mr. Betts have hosted a Meet the Berlin High School Administration Night. We had about 150 people in attendance. They did a Q&amp;A session and provided a timeline on the opening activities. So that was very well attended, and they got great feedback so far. I think it's where, at that phase where the buzz is starting, starting to get going, and people being excited. We just got released our Prepared for Success numbers, college and career enrollment and completion data. That's provided by the National Student Clearinghouse. This is data that Mr. Fetty's been compiling over the years. It's different than the Board of Regents. The National Student Clearinghouse data encompasses Ohio's public colleges, as well as most public out-of-state colleges, and private colleges, both in and out of state. So you see there that we are well above the Ohio four-year graduation rate and Ohio's six-year graduation rate. So we're pleased with the progress of our students in college. Just want to make a note, 18% of our graduates since 2009 have attended Ohio State. 11% of our graduates have attended Columbus State. Following popularity are Ohio U. with 7%, University of Cincinnati with 5.2%, and Miami with 4.8%. And the most attended private college by our students is Otterbein University, and the most attended out-of-state college is now the University of Kentucky.
Kentucky.
I didn't know that would surprise me, but I'm happy to see that Otterbein is our top private college. So, just got back the ACT composite results for the class of 2017, and we have cracked the 25 barrier. That's the first time we've been over 25, which is a good thing. State average is 22. So it'll be interesting to see. Next year's results will include all of the students, because all of the students will have taken the ACT for the first time. Percentage of students taking it last year, Jack? Ninety-two. So we already have 92% of our kids taking the ACT. So I don't expect much of a tick on that.
Last Saturday.
Oh, yeah.
That's right.
For school, though.
Well, that wasn't, we're doing it in school also.
Right. That's in April, I think.
Yes.
So I, oh, sorry, skipped over the state test result slide really fast. So I thought about re-titling the slide, Good Things, dot, dot, dot. And I do think all in all, our state test results are strong. When we look at the achievement, achievement slide, the performance index score has gone up. Our indicators met. We were the only district in Franklin or Delaware County to get an A in that measure for indicators met. Gap closing in K-3 literacy, graduation rate, and Prepared for Success. Progress, value-added, growth continues to be perplexing to us. You know, we were a all-A growth district for 10 years, and we had a year there where we had the highest growth in the state, and we had the highest growth in the state in every sub-component. Obviously, the tests have changed, how we take the tests have changed. I'm anxiously awaiting Jack and Jeanette's explanation of that grade next board meeting. So we will have a detailed report on all of those progress measures, where we've been in the past, where we are now, and you can see the comparisons. We have already arranged a meeting with Chris Woolard from the State Department of Education to come up and help us explain this, the progress measure grade, you know. But again, I don't want to focus just on that, because it is just one measure, and I think we do have strong academic results, and our teachers continue to do the best. The hardest part to deal with this, and this is that it is disheartening for the teachers to see that F grade on there, because I truly believe they're doing the right work, and our kids are growing.
But what's not prominently displayed is the performance index. You have to drill, you have to do another click, and their website was down all day today. But Olentangie and Central Ohio were third behind Grandview and Grandview Heights, which are very small schools, by the way. You know, and I think that is the most important thing that comes out of this report card is your performance index.
And we're, we're 27th in the state overall out of 610 districts, so that remains strong. You know, and, you know, again, there's different conversation about the achievement indicators and the growth indicators, and, you know, all we're looking for is consistent, what consistent measure, and how we can properly report our progress. You know, the thing that's frustrating is that the state designed this report card as a way to simplify the reporting of school districts' performance, and all it is, has been more complicated. Our gap closing grade is a B. A number of our buildings received demotions for lack of participation. Some of that's due to kids opting out. You know, and that's.
Your literacy.
Really hard to explain.
The literacy is so confusing.
Yeah, and, you know, we've had, ever since the third grade reading guarantee's been in place, we've had to retain one student. It was a student who moved in two weeks before the test was taken. But that, with one student in.
Five years?
It doesn't sound like a C in K-3 literacy to me, but considering there've been thousands and thousands of kids graduating, or moving on, so. But as I said, Jack and Jeanette will have a very good presentation on that at our next board meeting. So be ready to spend some time on that. We do have two discussion items. Jack's going to give you an update on one specific policy, and then Emily's going to give you an update on where we landed with the Creekside Industrial Park CRA and TIF, and the modifications that were made off of the last meeting we had. Two agenda items, one board action item, the Creekside Industrial Park Project and TIF, CRA and TIF, and then one of the additionally declaring additional students transportation impractical. Finally, our next meeting is September 28th. We're starting, if you recall, with a tour of Berlin High School. Mr. Betts and Mr. Spinner are very anxious to show off, and Mr. Gordon, the very, the excellent progress there. And then we'll come back here for our board meeting. It will be at 7:00. You want to join us? You can come. All right. Galax is going to be with us.
So we're going to meet up there and then drive back down here as I cut.
Got it? All right. Very good. Thank you very much.
Can I comment on good news?
Thanks for Mr. Rafe.
I'm sorry, Roger, didn't mean to talk over top of you there. Just to continue on the good things with the music program, kudos to the volunteers to put that together. I mean, it's a great way to support the new high school's music program, but I think what they're doing is transcendental for the district. We continually are messaging about how we are one school, Olentangie community. And I don't know that there's a better way to do that than three high schools getting together to support a fourth high school to say, hey, we're all in this together. We're all part of one school district. So I just thought that was extremely clever and well-thought-out.
I agree, and I have to say that I actually had high school students come to my house with a flyer. I've never had high school students come to my house to promote or sell or whatever they were doing.
Really? What's that address? I got a whole bunch of them.
No, I never have, and I thought that was great, because this is all going towards the new, you know, the new, they're supporting our fourth school. So I was really proud and impressed. I felt bad I didn't have cash. I was like, I will be there. I'll work it.
Wear your Berlin shirt.
Oh, I am. I am wearing my Berlin shirt. So it'll be fun.
Thank you. That girl's already took it. Good thing.
Ms. Snafffield, treasurer's report, please.
Absolutely. So we have, I'll cover the agenda items that we have for tonight first. We have three agenda items, our August 10th and 22nd minutes for approval. We also have several donations. Our Indian Springs PTO donated rocking, four rocking chairs for their library, valued at just over $255. Tyler Run PTO donated paint for the library, main office, and other areas of the building. That was roughly $1,900. We also had an anonymous donor that contributed $4,500 to Berkshire Middle School's Washington, DC Trips Scholarship Fund. And the Olentangie Orange Athletic Boosters donated just over, excuse me, $5,000, $500, I had a, I wrote the note down wrong, for additional field hockey coaches. And there was a donation for the school's assistant volleyball coaching as well. So we thank all of those individuals and representatives for their donations to the district, and for those that donate their time and efforts as well. Also, we have been working with our insurance committee to discuss ways that we can help educate our staff on items regarding cost containment or how to utilize our current plan design. So we're putting together an education program that, with different, trying to brainstorm and come up with different media ways, different outlets to get to people, to outreach our entire staff. Not everybody learns the same way or gets, has the same access to computers and so forth. So we're brainstorming on that process, and then discussing plan, objectives, and designs. So we will have another meeting at the end of September, and then another follow-up meeting in October, and we're trying to stagger that out. And we continue to move forward and make good progress. So we'll be able to do, you know, have more information as we continue those meetings. And then we also have a meeting with our finance and audit committee at the end of September to discuss the October forecast update. So we'll get together on the 26th and review the assumptions and the information within that forecast, and then we'll present that to the board first reading at the October 5th meeting, and then have it for approval at the second October meeting. And then after Mr. Fetty tonight, we'll talk about the Creekside TIF. Are there questions regarding the treasurer's update?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public participation comments for session one?
No.
Okay. So with that, we'll move right into the discussion items, and Mr. Fetty, first reading of board policy updates, please.
Evening. I'm presenting a revision to our gifted policy, which is brought about by a change to state law that occurred, I believe, at the end of last calendar year, if I'm correct, and that we have to have implemented this year. So the changes that you see in the draft policy are all required changes from the state. We circulated the policy through the policy committee, and they have all recommended it for approval. The major change that you should be aware of in the policy is that it is a unfunded mandate from the state. We're required to provide 30 hours of professional development to all teachers who are providing gifted services as the district. gifted services as the district, that's 30 hours this year and 30 hours next year. So, it's a lot of PD in a short amount of time, and as a district with the largest population of gifted students in the state of Ohio, you can imagine that involves a lot of teachers. So, curriculum department has done a lot of good work, thinking creatively about how to provide this professional development with release time and embedded in their day in all sorts of ways. But it is coming at a cost to the district, but we are doing our best, so.
I did talk to Representative Brenner today, and I know Mr. Rafe did too, and Representative Brenner wasn't aware of the extreme cost that this mandate, unfunded mandate is to the district, but he's aware of it now.
Yes, we talked to him, I talked to him on Tuesday, or Monday this week, and it was funny. Yeah, he was like surprised by it.
Yeah.
What is the cost?
It's hard to quantify at this point. At the end of the year, we should know, but if basically every, not every, I would say half of our teachers are going to be pulled out for professional development, up to two times each, and a sub-cost is roughly $100 per substitute, so.
Yeah.
I haven't done the math in my head. I'm not going to try and embarrass myself here, but it's a lot of money in sub-costs. And once we have, have it underway a little further, we could probably calculate an exact cost for you, but significant.
We're trying to do the, designing a lot of the professional development during times where it doesn't require us to get a sub, sharing subs and that, but there will be, and the other cost is taking teachers out of the classroom.
Right.
Now they're not teaching.
Right.
It's just hard costs and soft costs.
Yeah, right.
Like Monday is a, is a professional development day, correct?
Yes.
So, we, are you covering any of that on Monday?
Yes, yeah, we have three planned professional development days, and some of the required hours will be covered in that time, about 30 hours. Even if we used all of our professional development days, that would only get us to 18 hours. So.
Another quick question on page 5 of 7. Item J talks about being able to offer advanced placement or international baccalaureate courses.
We do not offer international baccalaureate courses. So, we could either leave that in there as, in case we ever do, it covers it, or we could take it out and put it in if we ever started offering IB. We don't intend to in the foreseeable future. It's not something that's on the radar, but it's in the state's recommended language. So, there's no harm in necessarily leaving it in, but, and also no harm in taking it out. So, if there's a preference of the board...
So, people led to believe that we're on the cusp of introducing it, if we're not.
Any thoughts from anyone else?
Well, they'd have to sit and read through the policy, which is lengthy.
Oh, yeah, you're asking a lot.
This wasn't bad. This one was only seven pages.
Yes.
Right. Because the policy usually gets, what, we get 20 or so?
Yeah, they can be short or long. There's lots of them. But is there a preference?
I will say, I would, I think that's a good point, given, because...
I would say take it.
We're not on the cusp.
Take it out.
We're not on the cusp of getting international baccalaureate. It's very expensive. It overlays over the AP.
Right, you can do College Credit Plus or the AP.
I will make the revision for the second reading. Any other questions or revisions? Thank you very much.
Mr. Hatfield, Creekside Industrial Park Project, TIF update.
So, as we've, oh, sorry. As we've talked about at previous, our previous meeting, Mr. Lamb came in and presented the proposed, the TIF proposal for the Creekside Industrial Park, which is located within our boundaries. The site is 93 acres of land adjacent to Menards. The zoning is currently in place for industrial zoning on the property. The TIF would fund the expansion of two major, or two roadways, Corduroy Road and Green Meadows Drive. The developer's proposal is to build 1.3 square, 1.3 million square feet of commercial space for development for logistics, light manufacturing, flex space, and office space. Without the development of that commercial base, the district would collect approximately $120,000 on just the property over that 20-year span. Collections based on the valuations brought forward by the developer would be roughly $6.9 million over that same time span. So, the language that we asked for changes on, in particular, was that the infrastructure funds that would be developed through the TIF fund would be set aside for the district's infrastructure, meaning it would stay within our boundaries, not just be allocated to Delaware County in general. They have come back with that in our, in the resolution that's coming forward for the board's approval, and they have changed that and made that specific that the infrastructure will be placed within Olin Tangi's jurisdiction. So, they, they satisfied that ask. No other changes were made to the proposal. Do you have further questions about the proposal?
I'm happy with the changes.
Yeah, I'm glad you made the choice there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hatfield. Do we have any participation folks for session two? Moving along, I would like to present board action item A, which is the approved resolution waiving statutory notice created, preventing reinvestment area, yada, 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 for the tax income financing for Creekside. I'd be happy to read that through for everyone if they'd like to do that. Any comments?
The only comment is to reiterate what Emily just said. Over a 20-year period, we're getting, you know, like $100,000 off of the land if it stays as is, whereas if it, if we approve this change, the developer has told us we can expect $6.9 million over 20 years. So, that's the decision, really.
Supporting commercial development.
Yes.
And it is, it is the first piece of what's going to be more. So, while I do have reservations still about the connector for Home Road and what that will bring long-term, it is good for the district. So, with that, we have a motion and we have a second. So, Mr. Hatfield, if you would call the roll, please.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. Barts?
Yes. Mrs. Hatfield, if you would present treasurer action items, please.
Absolutely. I would like to present treasurer action items A and B for approval, please.
I'll move.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Any comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mr. Barts?
Yes. Mr. O'Brien just said he appreciates the donations, and I second that hardly. That's, that's very nice of our families and people here in the district that care so much about what goes on here. With that, Mr. Rafe, would you present superintendent action items, please?
Yes, I'm going to start by presenting superintendent action item B4 separately.
Okay, so, superintendent action B4, please.
To approve the classified Wednesday, Saturday school instructor, $50 occurrence for John Fiesel.
Salute.
A second, please?
I'll second, sir.
Okay, any comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Obstein.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. Barts?
Yes. Mr. Rafe, would you present the balance?
Yes, present the remaining superintendent action items A through D.
Don't move.
I'll second.
Any comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mr. Barts?
Yes. With that, remind everyone, our next meeting is the 28th. We have the tour of Berlin High School. Should be great, very exciting. And with that, if I could get a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
I'll second.
Any closing comments? If there are none, please call the roll.
Mr. King? Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mr. Barts?
Yes. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Have a great evening, be safe.